We'll call this meeting to order.
I ask Commissioner Rocky Ford to do the invocation and place the U.S. flag.
Y'all bow your heads, please. When we come to you tonight, we ask you to have your hand on this meeting. Have your hand on the people going to and from this meeting for safety. When we ask you to look over our military, our first responders, keep a, keep a hand on them. And, uh, when we ask you to be with, with Ukraine tonight as they defend theirself from being intruded by a hostile nation, Russia. Lord, we, we ask all these things in your name.
Amen.
Thank you.
United States of America, the republic of which stands one nation under God and the individual individual.
Are there any additions or deletions? I think we have a list here.
Uh, yes, there are some deletions, sir. Or, I mean additions. We have a proclamation number 2022 P-12, National Farm City Week.
I'm gonna do that at the beginning of the meeting.
All right, we have the ship program income that the clerk's office sent to us that they need to go ahead and appropriate this month. Uh, there's resolution number 2022 R-65, which is a resolution of support for a broadband application for Comcast. And then there is the revised position description for the inmate crew leader.
Put them all under your. Do I have a motion for approval agenda?
No moves.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion passes. I'm gonna do this proclamation now. Read it. Proclamation number 2022 P-12, Columbia County Board of County Commissioners. Whereas Florida farmers and ranchers help feed the world by producing a bounty of nutritious foods. To do this, they rely on essential partnerships with urban and suburban communities to supply, sell, and deliver finished products to consumers across Florida and around the globe. Whereas rural and urban communities working together have built our nation's rich agricultural resources so that they can contribute to the health and well-being of our country and the strength of our economy. Whereas during National Farm City Week, we recognize the importance of thi- of this cooperative network. Agriculture and related enterprises employ more than 2 million workers, including farmers, ranchers, shippers, processors, marketers, retailers, inspectors, and others who contribute an annual impact of 146 billion to Florida's economy. Whereas they perform their daily work, farmers and ranchers preserve freshwater tree charge areas, wildlife habitat, and green space. Consumers help farm families maintain their superior natural resource conservation practices by purchasing Florida's agricultural products. Farm City Week activities celebrate the motion, whereas Farm City Week activities celebrate the mutually beneficial relationship that support the quality of life we all enjoy. This week, as we gather with family and friends around the Thanksgiving table, we count these relationships as among our blessings. Whereas we commend the mon- the many Floridians whose hard work and ingenuity provide us with food abundance and reflect the true spirit of our state and nation. Now therefore, we, the county commissioners of the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim November 16th to 23rd, 2022, as Farm City Week. We call upon all citizens to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of all those who working together produce and supply our community, our nation, and the world with an abundance of agricultural products. Attested James F. Swisher, Clerk of Court, and Robbie Hollingsworth, Chairman of the County Commission. Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion passes. Is there anybody here for a photo? All right, let's move on to the presentation, Swan River Water Management District. Come on down. Give us your name and good to go. We have it.
Fantastic.
You're kinda tall. Put, maybe bend those up a little bit.
There we go. Is that better?
There you go.
Perfect, perfect. All right. Chairman Hollingsworth, members of the board, thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is Troy Roberts. I am the Communications and Outreach Manager with the Swan River Water Management District. Tim Alexander was supposed to speak with you tonight. However, he had a prior commitment come up, and I was asked to make this presentation for him. So again, we thank you for having us. Historically, the district has presented the payment in lieu of taxes to counties within the district where the district owns property. However, due to the timing of fiscal years, the district has been mailing out the checks in June. But we still want to appear before you and present work that the district is doing within this county and obviously the partnership that we have and appreciate or express our appreciation with the counties that we, um... Just a little bit about the district itself. There's about 7,600 miles within the district, and we are part, or we encompass all or parts of 15 counties. 13 river basins, and we have a population of 300,000. There are 450 springs within our district. And obviously, the district's mission is to preserve and protect those not just for us today, but for future generations. Our areas of responsibility that we focus on are water supply, water quality, flood protection, and natural systems restoration. Looking at our major initiatives that the district has, springs grants, alternative water supply grants, a grant program called River, ag coal share programs, minimum flows and water levels, which is also MFLs, water supply planning and water quality initiatives. Regarding MFLs, just to keep you updated, we are currently updating the recovery strategy for the Lower Santa Fe and Itchituckmi. We expect that to be completed late next year. And we are also currently wrapping up technical work on MFLs for the upper end, Middle Swanee. And that'll be here with you early. Looking at some of the ongoing projects within Columbia County, there are several here. A few of them that I wanted to highlight. The first one, the Ellisville Towne Fort White Meter Replacement Program. The county and Fort White have proposed replacing existing manual meters with automatic radio meters. This is a $293,000 project, but it'll allow for better tracking of water usage and replacement of meters and attachment fittings will help reduce water loss. The other one that I wanted to highlight was the Well Heights Regional Pond. This is gonna conserve over 800, or conserve 800 pounds of nitrogen that are estimated to be removed from the project every year. That'll help with direct treatment for roadway improvements on both State Road 4247 and Interstate 75. One of the things that we wanted to highlight that we've been working on for the past year now is a updated map on our website, myswaneriver.com. Been a little behind the times and have still all of our district properties that we own. If you were looking for information on them, they've been PDF formats. Fortunately, technology moves very quickly, and about the time you make updates and upgrades, a new technology comes along. What we've been working on is providing more resources and additional information about all of the tracts of property that the district owns. Almost nearly 100% of those are open to the public for enjoyment and also help with tourism in the area. So what we have created is a website that you will, it's an interactive map. You can go on there and search for specific amenities if you're looking to fish anywhere in our district, if you're looking for fishing opportunities in Columbia County. You can go on there and look specifically for those. I wanted to highlight the Falling Creek tract here in Columbia County. Photos like this will appear on there, and also this information that shows you exactly where it is, directions on how to get there, and then the amenities offered. So you see Falling Creek has ATV, biking, equestrian. It's part of the Florida National Sea and Trails, hiking and multi-use. This is easy to find. You can go to our website, myswaneriver.com. You can also go to app.myswaneriver.com and search it. It's mobile friendly. We wanted to make sure that everyone who's using a phone in addition to computers has access to it. So there's the web address there. And that's what I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Question?
Sir? We appreciate all the help you give us.
Thank you so much. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brooke Frye?
Hi, good evening, guys. It's good to see you guys again. Sure you've seen my face a few times. We're just, so I'm with the Tobacco Free Columbia Partnership. We work together to mobilize our community and advance policies that will help end nicotine addiction, protect our youth, and improve public health. We know the health effects and addictive nature of tobacco and nicotine and how it's affected us all in one way or another. Our strategies and efforts help change the social norms of tobacco use while also encouraging and supporting cessation. We are here tonight to inform you about a new, the new Regulation of Smoking by County and Municipalities Act that took effect on July 1st. This act, which was part of the Florida Clean Air Act, formerly the Florida Clean Indoor Air Act, granted the local government the ability to set their own smoke-free policies for outdoor shared spaces they own and maintain. The act was updated to authorize the restriction of smoking within the boundaries of any public beaches, or in our case, our parks. This is a great opportunity for us to create a healthy environment for our kids to play. And I'd like to introduce you to our SWAT member, Jacob, and he's gonna speak to you a little bit more on this.
Good evening, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Jacob Kuzick, and I'm speaking to you today on behalf of the Students Working Against Tobacco, or the SWAT Club, and the Boy Scouts Troop 85. I am here tonight to talk to you about how you can help us make our county parks and our community a safe and healthy place for kids to play. Currently, 54% of youth in Columbia County report being exposed to secondhand smoke from tobacco and vaping. We know there is no safe level of exposure. Both cigarettes and vape products contain lead, formaldehyde, and other cancer-causing substances, making this a health threat to our kids. Cigarettes are also the most littered item in the country. And because the filters and vape products are not biodegradable, they are damaging our environment and causing pollution problems. As county commissioners, you are at the forefront of ensuring that our residents are safe from the dangers of these harmful products at our county parks. You're proposing that you pass on ordinance that aligns with the Regulation of Smoking by County and Municipalities Act to restrict smoking and vaping within our county parks and centers. This ordinance will reduce the risk of secondhand smoke exposure and create a cleaner environment. As part of this ordinance, we want to ensure equitable enforcement by limiting law enforcement and using tobacco-free signage as a deterrent. We believe this policy will be beneficial for our community. I am proud of the community that I live in, and I want to make sure that we are all doing what we can to make it a welcoming and safe place to live and play. It will be nice to know that we can all play in our parks and not be exposed to the health effects of secondhand smoke, and that we are working together to improve our environment. Thank you for your time and consideration of making our parks tobacco-free.
Yes, sir.
Guys, have any questions?
You have any question?
I have provided a sample ordinance to the county attorney, so if you guys have any questions, he does have the relevant information, so if you have any questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Ron.
It's my, my understanding that if we pass this order, it'll be on a volunteer basis, a place on our parks that we won't have law enforcement going out enforcing such an order. Am I correct?
Yeah, we would, we would prefer to use signage as the main deterrent. We would really vote like that as the deterrent.
Councilor, don't we have signage now on our parks? Tobacco-free?
We, we only prohibit smoking according to the Florida Indoor Clean Air Act. So we prohibit in county buildings except in designated areas, but in county parks, you can, you can't have alcohol, but you can, you can use tobacco products.
Pretty sure the sign at Fort White says no tobacco products.
Is it at the community center?
At the ball fields.
I know there has, so I know like our soccer fields, they have signage up, but you know, it's not, you know, before now, we really couldn't enforce it in any way, you know, that some people have signages, but now we actually have the authority to provide signage. We can, you know, enforce it with law enforcement. We don't really wanna use law enforcement. I mean, we could maybe pose a, a fine or something, but really socially, we think that it would be just, if, if there's signage, most people respect that.
You have, you said you have a, a copy of a proclamation?
There is a sample ordinance I have provided.
She's provided it.
I have, yes.
Do you have your view that, Mr. Foreman?
Yes, sir, I've looked it over. If the board's interested in having it set for the agenda, I can put it up for an adoption hearing. I'd, I'd have to go through the normal ordinance process.
So we can approve this tonight, then?
Cannot. You just direct.
I mean, we're gonna prove it. The concept of have a hearing for it?
Yes, sir, we'd start to do this on the same process.
I guess you have forward that.
Mr. Foreman will work on that, and we'll get it done.
Fantastic. Thank you guys very much.
Troy Cruz.
Come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have an application, SP 2201. This is for a special permit for a weekend event located at Run 138 in Mr. Ford's district. It was approved by the Board of Adjustment on October 27th.
All right, do we have an open public hearing for this?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm gonna open up a public hearing for this. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this? Not seeing anyone. I hereby close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve SP 2201.
Second. Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion passes. Thank you. Do I have a motion for this consent agenda?
No moves.
Second. Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Adopt.
Second. We have a motion for the adopt consent agenda.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion passes. Go Foreman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After a long and winding road, two items that we'll be considering together this evening. First is a proposed revised standard license agreement for all county community centers. You'll recall through the course of several workshops over the last few months and various agenda items, we discussed the need to make some changes. Those changes have been prepared with staff and were submitted as part of your agenda packet together with a red line, so you could see where those changes were. We also have a proposed licensing agreement that's been approved by the Richardson Community Center Advisory Board. Richardson's is slightly different for two primary reasons. One is we don't own that property. It's a, it's under a lease, so that language had to be different. And secondly, because of the amount of co-location of county recreation department activities, paragraph nine in the Richardson Agreement is different than it is for every other community center agreement. Richardson Board understood that and actually welcomed that language because it helps clarify things as well. The version of the documents that you received with your agenda packet was slightly changed in response to a concern the Richardson Board had, and that related to replacement of the kitchen equipment that we provide initially with the community center. So a standard range, a standard oven, standard refrigerators, if those go out completely, the county would replace those. If they would like to upgrade them, you know, go from a four burner to an eight burner with gas, whatever, they'll have to take care of that. But this is ju, they wanted language to make it clear that the standard appliances that are provided with all community centers, if they needed to be replaced, the county would replace them. Mr. Kraus thought that that did actually sound reasonable, so we changed that one. But it's changed again in both documents. If you'll recall, when we were having the Richardson discussions, the board's ultimate resolution was Richardson Community Center, just like every other community center in the county, these two documents, if approved, accomplish that. We are requesting a motion by the board approving both.
Do we have a motion? Have a motion?
Yes, sir, some movement, Chairman.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kirby.
See him with that camouflage.
You look really nice today.
I got camouflage.
Hiding from us.
I didn't even see.
He's hiding.
I just seen his big old head walking by.
Great to it. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have four items for your consideration this evening. The first item is down on Old Wire Road. This is a proposed change order, as we've discussed many times. All construction costs have went up. Cost of asphalt has extremely went through the roof. Through negotiations with the contractor, he's willing to not consider a profit margin of the lime rock or other various items. He simply needs compensation for the additional asphalt in your backup package. It provided the date that this was bidded, what it cost at the plant versus the day, so I'm requesting a motion to approve change order number one on the Old Wire project in the amount of 124, 120.
So move. Second. I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion passes.
Thank you. Second item I have is your equipment purchases, Transportation Trust of 514009. As Mr. Kraus and I indicated earlier in the budget process, we attempt to do many things in transparency this year. This is one of them. The monies were included as year-end reserves. This budget amendment will move the capital account in the amount of 514009 in an effort to purchase the equipment. I'm requesting a motion to approve Budget Amendment 2306, Transportation Trust Equipment Purchases Year End Reserves 1018400, 5849031, Capital Outlet Machinery and Equipment in the Amount of 514009.
So move. Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion passes.
Thank you. Third item is a MOU with Swan River Water Management District as it relates to Fort White and Ellisville Water Meter Replacement. Water Management District in the FDHP has awarded us a $205,000 grant to us to replace the meters in Fort White and Ellisville. Grant will require a 30% match of 88506, which the town of Fort White has agreed to cover. Requesting a motion to approve the MOU Swan River Water Management District.
So move. Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, my final item is bid number 2022II, water tank replacement in Fort White for 93720. We had three bids. Successful bid was Florida Industrial Construction Service. Requesting motion to approve bid and contract of Florida Industrial Construction Service, LLC, the amount of 9372096.
So move. Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Kevin, on that particular tank there, is that we will be able to be used as the water comes in, in the future from Ellisville, stored, tank of?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank y'all so much.
That is, that is the actual pressure tank.
I got you. Okay. Mr. Kraus.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple, few short items that'll go quickly. The first one is good news. Economic Development Incentive for Robbins Manufacturing. They're an existing company here in our community. They're a family-owned business that started in 1938. Their primary facility is down in Tarrytown, Florida, and they were acquired by Cochran Forest Products in 2018. They want to expand their existing production facility where it's at, so they're requesting economic incentives. They're gonna invest $6.5 million into the facility, add 14 additional employees, followed by another shift in three years for eight additional employees. So 20,000 total square feet of the addition. The treatment plant is 18,000 square feet plus a dry kiln of 12,000 square feet. As you can see, the wages will be on an average of $22 an hour. It went before the Economic Development Advisory Board. They went through the scorecard that we always go through, which was, I believe, attached to your agenda packet, and the Economic Development Advisory Board is recommending 75% tax abatement for seven years. Request the board to approve tax abatement.
Move to adopt.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion passes.
Did the attorney have a?
Point of inquiry, is it an industrial abatement or a refund?
I believe it was, um...
It's an industrial abatement?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Is that right, Jennifer?
Yes.
All right. Just wanna be sure.
And just for the record, I mean, when they first come to approach me, and I put them in contact with you, of course, David.
Yes.
I really appreciate this company. I, I mean, I was totally out of it, but it sounds as though that to me, when they, when they set out to do, they did everything they were supposed to, and it went pretty good for the most part, didn't it, Jennifer? I'd love to get 100 more of them, you know, of our local people. I always heard, well, we invest in outsiders, but this is proof, you know, this was a good deal for everybody, and I appreciate everybody's effort. Thank you.
We appreciate you directing them towards us. Part of the effort, like you said, that we're trying to invest in our existing customers, not just bring new customers.
Absolutely.
It's a very important effort that we have. The next item is BA 2309, request for tourist development van. Basically, the last year in the budget, they wanted to get a van. We went through the enterprise leasing thing, so they're asking to move money from reserves or set aside the lease payment for this year when the vans come in. They're asking for a budget amendment to move money from reserves to the ability to pay for the lease.
No moves. Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion passes.
Now, the next ones, I'm gonna kinda go through all at once and then have you adopt them in order. The first one, we'll do separately from the other two. We're asking for a reclassification of one code compliance officer to a planning technician position. Basically, they'll be dedicated towards processing the applications and zoning and also helping get approvals for these things. Obviously, because it's an existing position, we would be taking a code compliance officer and moving it into this position or reclassifying this position. There's no budgetary impact. But it will allow Troy to have them focus strictly on making sure applications for zoning and land use get processed and get through the approval process in a timely manner.
So who will this individual answer, to Ms. Connie or Troy?
Yes. I mean, ultimately, they'll all answer to Troy, but this one would be working with Ms. Connie.
Yeah, I mean, but as far as their pyramid, got you.
Do we have a motion?
So move. Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, and motion passes.
Again, that will leave two code compliance officers left to do code enforcement, and we'll still have the Special Assessment Inspector focusing on the assessment. Next, we wanted to address recreation. We would like to request the board create a center program coordinator. This person's gonna oversee the operations of all the recreation programs and act as a liaison with the community centers and with the participating nonprofit recreation organizations. As you can see, in the job description, they'll do contract compliance, and they'll kinda make sure everybody's up to date on all the paperwork they have. They're also gonna manage personnel that are out in the field doing the actual programming, and they'll actually collect fees, you know, like if there's gate fees or registration fees, handle the money in accordance with the proper money handling techniques, and they'll serve as the department head in the recreation director's absence.
But they also work with the different, like the Fort White Youth Baseball.
Yes.
Work with those two.
They will be the liaison with all the different not-for-profits. They'll be the ones that make sure they keep up with all their contracts, they all have their insurance filed. Nothing's missing. That way, all that's done in recreation work should be, should be done.
And we have a public comment on this. Are you done, Mr.?
Uh, for that one, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Sebastian? Public comment?
I guess, Commissioners, Chairman, I guess I'm a little confused with number nine. I thought Mr. Copit was head of recreation, and last time we had a meeting, he was the one that was gonna be spearheading all of this type of stuff, and now we're calling last time we had a meeting, he was the one that was going to be spearheading all of this type of stuff and now we're calling for a new position. Is this in the budget or is this going to be something that's going to be added to the taxpayers? How's this going to be paid for?
Sebastian, here's what we got. Just what we talked about doing all the camaraderie about Richardson. Mario is going to stay where he is. You got to have someone at Richardson run the day-to-day operation, the program, and stuff like that at Richardson.
Right.
So that's the person that we are talking about now.
Well, if I go if I go to the agenda packet and I go to the budget that I was looking at, there is a job description for a office manager. Is that what y'all changing? Y'all changing that from office manager to coordinator? Because I'm trying to, we've already established the budget back in October.
If I can go ahead and get through the rest of the presentation, I'll I'll answer that question.
Okay.
The other thing we want to do is we want to have gym attendants rather than recreation aides. The reason being is the gym attendant needs to be independent. They need to be able to come in, open the gym, close the gym, provide basic custodial services, provide basic clerical services, like keeping track of who's there, who's not there. It's a little bit more responsibility. It'll pay a little bit more than the rec aid did. But they have to be independent. They have to be able to work independent. And as programs expand, they will have to operate without direct supervision, but they'll still have to report to both the recreation director and the program coordinator. Part of the reason this is important is we've directed our recreation director to expand recreation countywide. He's worked with the school district to gain access and have programs out at the Fort White Elementary School. So we're proposing, starting in February, having an open gym program at the Fort White Elementary School. Weekdays, three thirty to seven PM, Saturday from ten AM to three PM, and also develop basketball leagues in Fort White. So the center program coordinator not only is going to be working with Richardson, but they'll be working with any center, including Fort White's. And Mario will be developing the programs and trying to expand recreation programs across the county as we've discussed earlier. So we are requesting up to seven gym attendants to operate both Richardson and Fort White as the need calls for them. So we're not going to hire seven people upfront and then not need them. Obviously, in Fort White, they would come onboard in February as the school district allows us to use the facility. There is funding in two different accounts for all of this in the current budget. This is a reorganization and a restructuring of the department. Existing positions, the office manager, the recreation aides, would not exist. Instead, we'll have the program center manager and we'll have gym attendant. Job descriptions are very different. It's not that they're going to be doing very different things than what the other folks would do. So that is our recommendation is to restructure, reorganize recreation, have these two positions. And we're requesting you basically create the job positions and authorize the up to seven gym attendants and one community center or community program manager.
I'll make a motion. We approve. Wait a second. We need to do, we're doing nine and ten together or we're doing?
I was just going to make a motion for number nine.
Okay, number nine. Okay. So number nine is, and then you want to comment on number ten, Mr.? Okay, come on up. Just go ahead and if you want to do it, you know.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know how many minutes.
Is this going to cost us more money?
Wes.
Commissioner Williams, you good with this?
I'm good with it.
Okay, now we're going to the gym attendant.
No, let's let's finish number nine.
Get us a motion.
I got I got a motion on the floor.
I got a second.
Position description for the co-compliance.
I got a second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
I'm sorry, that was.
That was number nine.
Number nine. Program coordinator for recreation. Do we need to restate the motion?
Yeah.
Restate the motion for.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the position description for center program coordinator for recreation.
And authorize the position.
And authorize the new position. Have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion to accept the presentation for the position, position description, gym attendant.
Authorize up to seven?
And authorize the position.
So move. Are that your motion?
Yes, sir.
I second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion pass.
And then the last thing to do to make this effective is we need you to up to pass the revised general pay grade schedule that reflects all of these changes.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Board, this is this is a this is a very, very good move. All the years I personally was involved in the baseball program, this is going to take a lot of heat off Clint Pittman and his crew. This liaison in between these five oh one C threes and operations, this is a great, this is a, this is, we're going to repayment off of this for a long time to come. I appreciate everybody's effort that went into it and we did a good thing. Thank you.
The next item is very exciting. The broadband committee basically was listening to some presentations and supported both of them. This one was a presentation by Clearwave Fiber that used to be Hargray. They are wanting to submit an application to the Department of Economic Opportunity to build broadband and they want to build the backbone that they then can expand off of. They need a letter or a resolution of support from the Board of County Commissioners, so we're asking you to approve resolution number twenty-two R dash sixty-four.
Mr. Chair, this was discussed in length at the broadband committee and it is very exciting. We actually have have another one after this one. I reported to you at our last meeting the way the broadband funding came down, that the ISPs would have to step up and 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 request products on their own, that it kind of took 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 the wind out of our sails for being able to do that. And we're fortunate now to have not one but two grant applications coming before us. Neither of these will globally solve our broadband issues, but you do have to start somewhere and they will expand broadband to where to where it's not. And we can expand off that in the future as money comes, continues to come available. So I personally am very excited about this. Clearwave has been a participant in our broadband committee almost since it was formed, so we're very excited that, you know, they were the first ones to submit a bid. And with that, I'll I'll make the motion to support resolution number twenty-two R dash six-four.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say I appreciate all your work on this.
Yeah, that's a big deal, Tony.
I know you put a lot of time into it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And I would like for this board to consider, we have other outside non-commissioners representing the county in different areas. And I would like for if if Whit Wood, I would sure like for him to stay with broadband for this county. He know more about it than all the rest of us put together.
I did inform the committee that I intended to stay active as a citizen on the committee and I will continue to serve, you know, as as you request me and see fit.
Appreciate it.
Then on the additions, the next one is resolution number twenty-two sixty-five, resolution for Comcast. This is the same situation. They went to the broadband committee. They want to, rather than build backbone, they want to extend their services into rural areas within the county, both north and south of the center city. The maps are proprietary, so we can't unfortunately share them. But they're asking for your, pass this resolution to show support so they can apply for the grant.
And this one was also linked, it's discussed in length at the at the at the broadband committee meeting. Yeah, the maps are proprietary, but we can, we can tell you that the areas they look, they are looking at expanding are the areas of need shown on that survey map that we spent, you know, the marketing money to get that was very successful too. And, you know, both of these grants, if they're successful, would represent ten million dollars of investment into our county for broadband. So it's a big deal. And with that, I'll request support, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two R dash sixty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next couple items that were additions are basically clerical things that we have to do before the end of the year. The first one is the inmate crew leader position description. We need you to revise it because when it was created, it did not include the requirement that they complete the Department of Corrections Work Squad Officer Training Program within three months of the date of their employment. If they're going to lead inmate crews, they have to have the class. So we're asking you to revise their job description to include that as a requirement of.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And finally, allocation of ship program income as the clerk's offices closing out the fiscal year. Ships spend all the money they receive, but some of the money they received was program income. They are requesting we approve or appropriate that program income and put it in their expenditure item so they can close out the fiscal year.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we have open public comments and more, three-minute limit. First, we have Kim Denmark. Across America. I don't see her here. Next, we have Sylvester Richardson Center Park Restaurants.
Chairman, let me be extremely clear. I'm going to not only use this time to specify to the Richardson Community Center, but I'm going to also use my addition to three minutes of comments, so it's going to be a total of six minutes. It's going to be a total of six minutes. I'm using my my three minutes to speak on the subject matter and I want to speak on public comments.
It's going to be three minutes, just like every other public comment.
No, no, no. You got me listed. Public comment is for the Richardson Community Center specifically, not as a citizen to speak on public comments. That's how y'all got it rolled up.
Okay, this is time for public comment.
No, no, no. This is, you you got it. You got it outlined, Commissioner.
You get three minutes.
I get three minutes on this subject matter and I can come back as a public comment.
You get three minutes and this is public comment time right now.
So you telling me?
We'll have another public comment right after you.
Right, and I can come back on that.
And they're going to get three minutes.
But I can come back up on the public comment.
No, this is public comment.
Now, Commissioner, I mean, you can maybe defer to your attorney. You got me listed to speak on a subject matter, not for public comments. Now, see, Joel can either, you know, straddle the fence, play the fifty.
Let's let the attorney.
Yeah.
Are you saying you're going to speak on the same subject for three more minutes?
No, I'm saying that I'm going to speak on this subject matter and then I'm going to come back on public comments, which it gives me the right to do so because you got one, two, and you got open to public comments as number three. So I get a total of six minutes. I get three minutes to speak on this subject matter and I get three minutes to come back and speak as public comments.
On a different subject?
It it doesn't, it doesn't say. It just say public comments.
I see open public comments to the board, three-minute limit. Kim Denmark, Sylvester Warren.
Yeah, but you specified what I'm going to be speaking on for those three minutes.
Okay, we're going to give you three minutes.
If there's another subject he wants to speak on.
Another subject you want to make a public comment on, you can.
No, 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 no. You you can't dictate. And I think my lawyer spoke with.
I did speak with your lawyer today.
Right, right, right. So Joel, I mean, I don't want to get in a pissing match with you, but I don't mind, buddy. But 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 the problem is, is that y'all have it listed. I didn't make, I didn't make.
Okay, Mr. Look, you're you're chilling up your time right now, Mr.
Okay, you got three minutes.
Three minutes on this subject matter and then public comment.
Three minutes now and three minutes.
Got you.
You got three minutes.
So the first thing I want to say is that.
Just three minutes.
First thing I want to say is that I don't want anybody to be alarmed by our protection and my raincoat. It's not raining outside, so calm down, fellas. The bad weather is inside and the bad weather that I'm referring to is the many lies and bullshit of many of you commissioners.
Okay, listen, we're not going to use profanity, okay? One more time using profanity, I'm going to ask you to sit down.
As I move forward, I would like to say that three minutes is unacceptable amount of time to be able to speak on the need of a bathroom. I think Robbie, Robbie, I think you went out there and you noticed that it's six hundred and sixty-one feet from any restroom at the Richardson Park. And that park does not coincide with any of the bathrooms. I think y'all went and played around the day and may talked about putting signs out there. The issue is, is that there should be public accommodation to a restroom. You all put a restroom out there on Lake Jeffrey that people use once a year for two months. And you got a predominant black community. Y'all, you ran out there today and you swear you care about kids. Do you care about kids that have to use the bathroom? And you care about especially needy kids that play at that park, they have to use the bathroom, that cannot make it? Six hundred and sixty-one feet, that's over two football fields long. And so I want to know where this board stand at on making that issue equal, fair, and just just as it is everywhere else. Because those bathrooms at the Richardson Community Center today continue to be locked. It's been a long history of locking. You can you can date back to David Kraus. He's in an honest mood today. He'll tell you that. This has been a long-going issue. If the attorney want to be in an honest mood today, he'll tell you it's been a long-going issue. And Robbie, you've came out there today and they were locked past the time that they say they're going to be opening. And you promised me in front of one of the staff members that that was the last time that would ever happen and it happened. And as a matter of fact, it's not even your district, but you tend to run over to District One for some reason. I don't know. You weren't bothering out nobody, but you're over there. So what can we do about this, boy?
Are you done? Are you done?
Boy.
Now, I want to answer this question after he's done. I want to hear everything so we can get it all at once. How much more time do you do you have, Mr. Warren? Go ahead and finish whatever you want to finish and then we'll answer all the questions.
You can go ahead.
No, 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 we're not going ahead. I'm asking you to finish and then we will answer your questions.
You need to.
That's how it works.
Turn your voice down, Rob.
That's how we do it. No, you're not hearing me, so I'm making sure you can.
Well, I can hear you.
I think the raincoat might be messing you up.
No, the raincoat ain't messing me up.
Okay.
Maybe it's your life.
How many more minutes? Okay. There's your three minutes. And we'll answer your questions now when you have a seat.
It'll be tough for you in the hood coming up.
You had a, you had something to say, Mr. Williams?
It's unfortunate that we inherited a situation where no one seemed to matter about what bathroom there, as long as the city had it. That was a city park for years after years after years and no bathroom was there. Give you a little history on how the bathroom got where they are now on what we call the Ferguson Building. I went out to the city park nearby the stadium one day and all these kids out there playing basketball. And I say, I I I put a nice basketball court. That's goals and all, but you all won't play there. They say, well, Commissioner, we don't have no bathroom to go to. And I thought about that. We don't have no bathroom to go to. So that bought on this board putting bathroom on the inside of the Ferguson Building and on the outside of Ferguson Building. If everybody remember, that park over there was completely separated from Richardson, although it belonged to the city. It was a ditch that went through it where I was instrumentally covering that that ditch up so a kid wouldn't fall doing high water in that ditch and drown. That that park never had a bathroom, just like Sally Joan Park there at the corner of Wilk, along the street in Marion. They built that park without bathroom, bathroom there. Now, we inherit that park now since we have the agreement. It is going to after the the COVID grant has been administered that that would be dead, the whole complex would be dead, dead over to the county. Yes, I think it need a bathroom. You got a park where kids come and parents bring the kids in play and there's no bathroom, never been a bathroom. But it's one of the things that this board addressed and when we address it, we will get it addressed.
I agree with Mr. Williams, Mr. Chairman. You know, we inherited their situation from the city. This board has done a good job over the years of expanding infrastructure at our parks, Richardson included, included. And and the proper procedure to do so is is, you know, it's brought up by the commissary in that district as I'm sure Commissioner Williams around budget time will do next year and it will get added to the capital project list like most other ones get added and and we will fund it. And and, you know, I think, well, we're over a half a, a half a million dollars funding at Richardson since we took it over. It's it's up there. So we have not set on our hands when it comes to funding Richardson or any other public park. We've got needs all over the county and we can't address them all at once, but this board has has had a history of addressing them, Richardson included. So, you know, thank, I thank Mr. Warren for bringing it to our attention. The the proper chain to do it is it's in Mr. Williams' district. Mr. Williams now knows about it. He sounds like he's in favor of it. And it sounds like next year, the the budget time, the board will address it.
Mr. Warren, please don't outburst from the crowd. All right, is there any more discussion from you, Mr. Williams? Just want anything else to say?
Staff is aware of my concerns about bathrooms.
Yep. And the signs are up right now. They're up five hours ago, four hours ago, something like that.
And to another point, it seems like maybe your staffing positions that we approved tonight may address the bathroom being locked.
Correct, correct, correct.
Those two are tied together. I think you saw that too.
Okay, do we have any other public comment? No? Not you, I thought you were raising your, oh yeah, come on, come on, Glennell. Glennell's up next.
I just want to make this obligation, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The fact that you inherit the issue don't make it necessarily right. I mean, we had dirt roads in North Lake City all the way up until 1982 and that certainly wasn't right. It took a lawsuit to make it right. And it suggests that the only time we're going to have bathroom is the next budget process. I know that there's money in your budget, this is emergency, sure not going to wait a year to pee. A kid out there using that park ain't going to wait a year to pee. They had a program out there last Saturday where a kid was peeing by the side of the bathroom door. It wasn't even open. We told them about the recreation park where the kids, on the area where they play on swing. If that's closed and there's no bathroom there, then what? The signs say, okay, use this bathroom at your own risk. You know, if you got to pee, don't come to this bathroom. Bathroom don't cost that much, you got to wait to the next budget, that's fine, but you're putting off something. You know, and I know it's animalist towards Sylvester, but under the case, I mean, it don't come across well. It don't come across well from Sylvester, I would agree. It certainly don't come across well from yours as Commissioners for the county. Now, he's my friend and I don't run away from that. But if you got on the other side and look at YouTube, you'll realize that it's not just Sylvester that's looking bad in the eyes of the public. It's those of you sitting up there also. But I want to say this, the fact that you inherited, don't make it not your responsibility to take care of. You know, and I live in the city, Lake City, Florida, that's in Columbia County. I pay county taxes, I pay city taxes, I live in Lake City, Lake City's in Columbia County. Sometime I think y'all talking about Lake City, just it's not in Columbia County. Them, the city doing this, the city buildings falling apart. Well, we are citizens of Columbia County. Last time I checked, I voted for Commissioner Ron William in this one, the only commission I ever voted for. So therefore, I think I deserve the same type of treatment that people get in Fort White, anywhere else. Just like that bathroom here in Lake Jefferson Road, how did that get out of Lake Jefferson Road? Was that in the budget? If it was in the budget, then that's fine. But I'm certain you can find money in your budget to provide a bathroom out there for children in North Lake City.
I understand that just because you inherit something don't make it right. But by golly, we had a nightmare out there. You know it and everybody else in the north end of town knew that if it wasn't for the county took over Richardson, we wouldn't have a Richardson right now, today. We wouldn't have a Richardson today if it wasn't for the county. We'll put over a million dollars in that facility. So that proved right there that we care about recreation, no matter where it is.
All right. Have public comment? Come on down, Mr. Osteen. Frank Osteen. Come on down. Watch, he's got his torpedo with him. Mr. Osteen, we changed the rules where you get three minutes. At three minutes, that thing will go off and I usually give you 15 to 20 seconds to finish, okay?
What are the files to get a pardoner up here to do part of my presentation?
As long as it's three minutes.
A pardoner or me?
Well, three minutes, are you telling us what you, what you talking about?
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
My name is Frank Osteen. I had a couple of questions I wanted to ask. I get my news out of Lake City Reporter. And I wanted to know that if the Commissioner's got an apology out of Sylvester Warren, you accuse the Commissioner of cover up. Don't everybody talk at once now, I can't.
We'll answer your questions at the end, Mr. Osteen.
Okay.
There you go, you get a full three minutes to talk.
Other comment? Is righteous. I've never heard that word anywhere other than a church setting. How did we get that in Lake City Reporter? And I wanted to ask Mr. Kirby and Mr. Kraus if they got an apology from Sylvester after the Yasko that happened in the manager's office.
We'll answer it then, Mr. Osteen, go ahead and give us all your questions.
I think that'll do it for right now, I need to say some.
Are you done, Mr. Osteen?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anybody would like to answer? All right, does anybody have anything to say to Mr. Osteen? Okay. Is there any more public comment? Come on down. Do it up and so they can hear it.
Locking down, so don't treat me any differently today, okay?
Well.
Because this is what happened last time.
Well, I want to hear.
So the first thing is.
I want it to be on the record who you are.
Are we on the record now?
We are, air and steam.
All right, good enough.
Okay.
First thing, I'm going to address what he just asked about as far as a cover up. Well, hell yeah, there's a cover up by each and every one of you guys, because you won't produce the video of the theft from the Richardson Center. There's a cover up, big time. All you have to do is just show the video and you guys won't do it. And your own lawyer is sitting right there. Let me ask you this, why won't you guys show the video, even if it's in a camera review? Why won't you show it? So that's question one that I hope that you guys will answer, rather than sitting there silent as you did for this gentleman with his questions. Above and beyond that, this is my phone. And somebody takes it. Who's the aggrieved party? I'd like you guys to answer that because that's exactly what happened at the Richardson Center. And there was a botched investigation by the police that you said there were four investigations. Well, I can tell you, every one of them, if it involved the theft of my money, was a cover up, plain and simple. Because if you look at the video, somebody stole my money and the police said that the aggrieved party was the Richardson Center. But if they never received the money, it's my money. I'm the aggrieved party, I'm the one that's suing, I'm the one that wants to know what's on that video and why you guys won't address it. Because you guys evidently have put yourselves in the middle of this by stating you won't give up the video in my public records request. Above and beyond that, Citizens Review Board, about a year and a half ago, you guys kicked me out of here when I spoke about Citizens Review Board when it came to Sheriff Hunter. And he decided to come up here and say that he doesn't stand behind sovereign immunity when I said that they do. And you decided to let him have a rhetorical conversation with me in the audience and throw me out. Well, I can tell you with the utmost surety, he stands behind sovereign immunity. And since the last year and a half when I was kicked out of here for that, how many lawsuits has he had? And I guess you guys, unless you live under a rock, know what happened in the news today. Sheriff Hunter needs to be fired, he needs to go. Now, I understand you guys may not have the direct responsibility on doing that, but do you want a sheriff who's going to stand there and lie to you and have police officers or deputies who constantly lie, break the laws, and he covers them up? That's the utmost ridiculous thing that I've ever seen when he's going to stand up there and cover for his officers that are repeat offenders. But I'd really like to know about that video. You going to show it or not?
Done?
Oh, my three minutes is up, I didn't want to go over and I didn't want to get kicked out.
Okay. Have a seat, we're going, we'll answer your question if somebody wants to answer your question. Is it? Can if you want.
Mr. Attorney, haven't we gone over the situation video? It is not a matter of public record because it is protected, right? It has security concerns.
Chapter 119 Florida statutes has an exclusion for any data that reveals the capabilities of any security system. Florida Supreme Court and every other court in the state, every other court in the state has ruled that video footage from a video surveillance system reveals the capabilities of the video surveillance system, therefore, it is not public record. Now, how do you get copies of those, how do you get access to those videos? The question, and the gentleman mentioned it, so I'm assuming he knows a little bit about it, is something called an in-camera review. If you're in litigation and if you have two parties in litigation, it's not a public records request, it's a subpoena, it's a request for records. I, as the county attorney, file a motion for protective order with that court. I explain to the court what the exemption is and why it's not something that should be generally released. And the judge issues an order and says I'll allow it to be viewed in camera. In camera means only certain people get to see it and the people who get to see it aren't allowed to talk about it. So there's a process for seeing a video. And nobody's denied the existence of the video. What we can't do is release the video itself because it reveals the capabilities of the security system. And that's black and white letter of the law in the state of Florida. I'm obligated to follow the law, that's what the law says.
All right, do we have, okay, hold on. You're done, the three minutes is up, you're done? He answered your question, I asked you to tell all your question? Well, you can ask him after the meeting, you can ask him anything you want, you can send emails, do anything you want. But he answered your question that you asked in the three minutes. Okay, I'm going to have to ask you to stand down, quit talking, because you've had your three minutes and we answered your question fully. Now, do we have any other public comment? Okay. You're going to keep interrupting until I throw you out, correct? Is that what you're going to do?
No, 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 in-camera review means only the judge sees it. That's what in-camera means, it means in-camera, in the judge's chamber.
Okay, you've had your question, he's answered it now again. Now, if you speak up one more time, I'm going to ask you to leave, okay? And then if you don't leave, I'm going to ask the deputy to tell you to leave, okay? So, you okay? All right, a public comment, come on down, sir. State your name when you come up to the podium.
Joshua Garner. Good evening, board members, Mr. Williams especially. I come to you today as not a person with anybody else's interests involved. I come to you as a parent who tries to instill values in my children, instills humility in my children. Try to raise the bright, as you all who are parents know and try to do. And I believe Mr. Bowden was the gentleman who mentioned that there was a kid on the side of the building peeing. That was my kid. And I know this is going to ruffle a lot of feathers because I'm white. But I don't think it's an issue of budget or anything like that. Whether they be locked, and I really do appreciate those seven people, I think that's really great. I think that the coordinator, I'm actually interested in that coordinator position, I think that would be a fun one, I'm interested in hearing more about it. But when it comes to restrooms that are either far away or locked, my kid is, he just turned three two weeks ago. And he's really, really good about letting you know that he needs to go to the restroom and it doesn't, it's not instantaneous, which is nice. So I had a little bit of leeway and one of the benefits that, you know, one of the reasons why I was out there was with kids feeding kids, helping let Cole and several other people within the community, which did an amazing job making a community garden out there. I'm extremely excited about the progress with that and the ability to not just feed folks, but to teach kids as a whole separate program with it. So I think there's a really huge benefit for that as well. And as we were out there, he notified me. And just one of those things where it's like, all right, let's run to the restroom. Luckily, we were at the garden, which is pretty relatively close. And we get there and the doors are locked. And serendipity, I don't know what it could have been. Obviously, it was a conversation that was brought up two meetings ago and it was just weird that that exact instance happened at that. I know those seven people are going to help. The one thing I will say, just in terms of budgets, I did a lot of research. I have no dog in that fight, it's the fourth time I've ever been there. I've passed that place a ton of times whenever I went to Knee Black as a sixth grade center student. But I don't go out there personally a whole lot. Now, with the community garden though, definitely will be. However, I did do some research, Mr. Williams, for bathrooms. One of which is an option that allows you to virtually graffiti proof. A lot of, it's actually made by Portland, the city of Portland. If I can just continue for maybe 15 more seconds to explain that to you and I'll give you the information as well. That bathroom can be delivered, literally dropped for $137,000 and it operates on solar. That's one benefit. Two, I had heard that the city also was able to build a bathroom for about 50 grand. So I feel like that could be another.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Mr. Warren?
We have a protocol that we use.
Comment.
No, no, you say that, you say.
Hold on, hold on, we're answering this young man's question and I want to have a question for you too.
I'm speaking to this gentleman here now.
Oh, yeah, I know, I want to talk to him too.
We have a protocol type that we use, but we know what it's going to cause, the cost just go up with inflation. I just finished one in Five Point Park. It would be a bathroom identical to that one. Yes, sir. Well, these make ADA requirements and all. Yes, sir.
Hey, I want to ask something, what time was that? Okay, did you, did you go around to the gym? Did anybody think to just walk around the corner to the gym and ask them? Right, right. Right, 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 and right around the corner is a gym. I'm just saying, if those, if that ever happens again where something is locked up, there's a gym right around the corner that was manned, I believe, at 10:30. When does that gym man?
I believe he, Mr. Kirby gets out there at 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, so if you had known, I'm sure you didn't, or you would have done it, you'd just walk in between the bathrooms, go right on the corner and go right in the front door of the gym. Okay, just for future notice, because mistakes are made, you know, sometimes, you know. Yeah. Right, right, right. Mr. Kirby?
Mr. Chairman, as this board knows, I think it's very important for the public to know. Every fiscal year, we identify proposed capital projects. We have X amount of dollars and in real time, we go through a cut sheet to make those successful or non-successful. As recent as a couple of weeks ago, we had a large water supply well at South Side go out unexpectedly. That's what we have reserves for. We have attempted to train staff without a shadow of a doubt. If you have an emergency, such as a well going out, a tornado blows your roof off, whatever that might be, a fire. whatever that might be, a fire, air condensate, you, air conditioning units go out, things of major cost. I think to conclude the conversation, in my opinion, as it relates to the bathrooms at Richardson or anywhere else, is it defined as an emergency? The well going out, we cannot irrigate thousands and thousands of dollars worth of grass. That's obviously an emergency. The purpose of the capital project list, I spend probably 50% of my time managing that for you folks. If we were to react every time, David, we went through it as recently as yesterday with the department. Guys, it's not an emergency. We plan our work, we work our plan. If we've done our job right, all dollars are allocated with a reserve account. Reserve account is there for emergencies. I just want to ensure the public is aware, we do have a process that we follow. And we deny department head requests on a weekly basis. If it's not an emergency, we do not talk about that until the budget time in the summertime. So I will leave it with this. That's the board's decision. If it is an emergency in management's eyes, that's defined as one process. If it's a request, that's what the budget process is for here regardless of the geographical location.
I would like to add to that. We have never said that the county would not build bathrooms. We said we would put it through the normal process.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Warren, Mr. Warren.
I got three minutes.
You, you've had three minutes, just like everyone else. Everyone else had three minutes. You've had three minutes. The lawyer said what?
Three minutes. I had additional three minutes. You say what now? You, I had six minutes. I had, I can come back up under public comment.
This is public comment.
I was limited to a specific topic on public comment. It's got Sylvester Warren-
No, you talked about other things than just Richardson Center. You talked about whatever you wanted to talk about.
No, I did not. I talked about Richardson.
Mr. Warren, you're not going to get three more minutes. Next meeting, you can have three more minutes, just like everybody else. Everybody gets three minutes. You don't get six minutes because you decide you want six minutes.
This, this, this-
You need to discuss this with attorney after this or text him, email him or whatever. And y'all can discuss this, but right now you're not getting another three minutes. And I would ask you to sit down, please.
This was what I was asked to talk about.
Mr. Warren, I'm going to ask you to sit down. Please, sir. The decorum is that you sit down. I'm going to ask other people for public comment. If there is none, you've already given your public comment. I would ask you to sit down.
You ain't going to like the end of this.
Okay, okay.
I can promise you-
I'm asking you to sit down.
No, because that's not what you told me-
One more warning and I'm going to ask the deputy to escort you out.
I'm going to the commissioner now.
One more warning. Okay, you can talk to Ron for a second.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So commissioner, that's not what we talked about. Uh, did we not? That's not what we talked about. We, we talked about that the Richardson Recreation Park needed a bathroom and getting the city to come out there and identify the plumbing and the water.
So, I mean, what's this got to do with additional three minutes?
What do you mean what's got to do with additional? My- Oh, commissioner, I, I tell you what, I tell you what. I tell you what, I'm not going to get these wass, I'm not going to get these wass what they want, but I call you.
You can listen, you can, you can listen, just like I listen.
Yeah.
You can listen. If you want to be on the agenda for a item to speak on, you don't put on a, on a three-minute comment.
I did ask to be, I, I, I just sent an email for them for them to put me on presentation. I sent the email for that, I showed it to you. And that's why I'm upset because I got put up under here when I asked to be on it as a, a presentation. That's what everybody's leaving out. They're not keeping you in the loop. I asked to be a presenter, not to go up under public comment.
Ron, do you want to discuss anything else with Mr. Warren?
I, I don't have anything to ask, ask, discuss about the bathroom.
Mr. Warren.
Staff know where, what, where my, this board knows concerned about the bathroom. So be it. We'll work towards that, doing, getting that done.
Okay.
I can't say anything else.
Commissioner, there's money in that budget to be found.
Okay, I'm going to ask you one more time.
Sylvester, I know the budget better than you did. I've been with it for 40 years.
Commissioner, what I'm not going to do, I'm not going to give these wass.
Okay.
These, I'm not going to give these wass.
Sylvester, one more, one more word and I'm going to ask the deputy to escort you out.
And we'll deal with it like we've been dealing with it. We'll deal with it like we've been dealing with it.
Thank you, sir. I need him removed. If he'll leave on his own, it would be much nicer. Is there any more public comment? Oh, Lord. Anyhow, is there any more public comment? Not seeing any. Is there any staff's comments?
Um, Ms. Chair, I, I do want to address that issue, uh, if I may. So the chi, uh, the county manager and the chair worked together to set the agenda. And the county manager, in an effort to make the agenda more accessible, several week, meetings ago, started placing folks who had specifically requested to speak as a courtesy. He put them under the open public comments and gave them an item so it'd be clear they were going to be speaking. And that was usually at the request of the person who was asking to be on the agenda. That's something that the county manager had done as a courtesy. I'm now going to advise the county manager not to do that again. If, if, if somebody's not going to appear on the agenda under a discussion or action item or as a presentation to the board, then they can just have open public comments. And, and we won't be listing people individually anymore. To get on the regular agenda, historically, you need at least one commissioner to ask for you to be placed up there. You'll notice the ones that were there tonight with the Suwannee River Water Management District, which is another governmental agency, and Tobacco-Free Florida, again, another governmental aspect that got them to that point. You'll remember that when our folks with American Legion wanted to come talk, where were they? They were in open public comment because that's where the, uh, county manager elected to put them. So in the future, if somebody would like to be listed as presentation to the board, not requiring voter action, or if they want to be on a discussion and action item, I would ask that at least one commissioner advise the county manager that they endorse that position. The reason that's important is this board is extremely liberal with public comment to the point that if somebody turns in a comment card, they can get three minutes on every single item on your agenda. So if there's 10 items on your agenda, every single citizen in the county can have 30 minutes that night. And so I'm asking, I'm just lit, I'm, well, 10 times three, right?
Okay, I'm for it.
Yeah, yeah. But, but, you know, there's, there's this, there's this attitude that this board is restrictive about public comments and it, actually the opposite is true. It, every citizen has a right to talk on every single item because a few years ago, y'all went to what, what we call inline comments. And nobody's ever been denied an opportunity to give inline comment. There used to be two minutes, they're now three. So I'm just going to ask the county manager. I'm sure he agrees with me. I didn't ask him, but I'm sure he does. At, at this point, we're not going to do this where we're trying to be nice to people and specifically list them in open public comments. We'll just have open public comment. If somebody can't get on the agenda, they can come present at that time. If anybody's got any question about that, I'm happy to entertain it, but I just, based on what happened tonight, I think we need to go forward that way.
Thank you, sir. Okay, you're out of line. You're not supposed to speak.
I absolutely did not say that, Mr. Chairman.
He did not say you could ask a question during this meeting. You can ask a question later to him if you want to. If you speak again, one more time, the deputy's going, one word, you're going to. Okay, thank you. All right, staff comments?
No, sir.
Any updates from the county manager?
Um, I'll bring them up next time.
Thank you, cover. Commissioner comments? Any commission, you, you missed weed?
No.
Nope.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I get, well, we, we can't adjourn now. We can't adjourn yet. We got to talk about this dummy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we going to do the recognition from Commissioner Whit. And I want to say a couple things. Uh, when I came in here, I was a new commissioner and I, I, I started this chairmanship pretty quick. And if you notice during my chairmanship, I, hey, man, you know, I would get stuff from him because neither one of them can hear you when you try to get with them. But, uh, I have really learned a lot from Toby, especially deep thinking. Toby's a deep thinker and, and I'm going to miss him. And, um, I, I think he did a great job as a commissioner. And, and he really did push Comcast in a way that, that really none of us wanted to do it. And Toby took the reins and did it, you know? So I want to thank him for being a good commissioner and thank him for being a, um, colleague of mine that gave me a lot of advice and I appreciate it. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on?
Well, it, it, it's always, uh, sometime good commissioners don't win. And, and, and Toby Daddy is probably one of the best friends I got. You know, fits together, hang out together and so I, I, I knew his, I, Daddy said he kind of hard-headed now. But, uh, he, he, he even made a damn good commissioner. He sure did. Going to miss him and Everett going to take the ham. So Everett going to get out and work and fill in the big spot he got to fill in.
Have you all the, all the, uh, here's the-
Pleasure.
Won't y'all just hug? Be done with it.
I, I, like, you know, me, me and Commissioner Whit got elected at the same time. We campaigned together all, the whole time we was campaigning and he taught me a lot about campaigning. He had done it quite a bit. But, uh, I was new at it and both of us, like I say, we got elected at the same time and, oh, he was very familiar with how government worked because he's worked with government basically all his life. Oh, managed, oh, paramedics and, oh, I say, he, he's just been such a help to me and I just appreciate everything you've done and I tell you, I probably, I probably done a lot better job because of him. Listening to him. Like Robbie said, he's a deep thinker. He comes up with a lot of good ideas and, uh, I'm going to miss him.
Commissioners, thank you for your, for your kind comments. It's, it's been an honor to serve with all of you the last four years. I, I want to thank the, the voters of District Four and the good Lord for putting me there the last four years. And, uh, you know, these midterm elections in District Two and District Four, I think Rocky besides yours, they've, they've all gone the same way. I think four years ago Everett was a victim of it when I got in there. The year Everett won, the first time that thing was closed, Commissioner Bailey almost got taken out. It seems like every time that race is in that midterm election, uh, you know, the candidates all have equal bases and it's just who turns out better that day. And, you know, Everett, Everett won that this time. Uh, but we, we, we do have a voter apathy pro, problem, especially in that midterm election that, you know, in future elections, people who run are going to have to deal with. Um, but, uh, I, I say all that because I, I don't want you guys to think that the results of my election is not because we didn't do good work and do a good job. The path we're on, I, I think is, is a historic path. I think from, uh, setting up the county utility, that's, that's going to prove to, to pay dividends for years to come. That was a bold step. No other board had taken the millions of dollars in, in, uh, utility grant projects you got funded that will come in the next two to four years, going to pay dividends. The thing I'm most proud of is we, I believe we were the first board and I initiate, I, this, this was my initiative. Well, I believe we were the first board in the history of Columbia County to voluntarily lower property taxes. I know there was, there was a legislative action that, uh, caused a mileage reduction in the past. But, but I believe that, 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 that we were the first board to voluntarily do that and, and that's something to be proud of. I've had, uh, probably 100 people since that election ask me what my future was. Am I going to do it again? Um, I can tell you the good Lord put me there four years ago. Um, the good Lord has kept politics in my heart. I still have a passion for it. And, 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 you know, this board may change in two to four years. Uh, one constant is probably Kevin Kirby. He ain't going nowhere despite all the noise. He, he'll still be sitting right there. But, uh, you know, we, whatever this looks like, but I'm not done. Uh, I'll just leave it at that. I'm not done. I will continue to serve Columbia County in broadband and, and also on the utility committee and, uh, keep doing those things even though I don't get paid. Keep doing those things as a citizen because those are things I believe in, uh, whether I get the privilege to serve or not. And, uh, you know, we'll see what happens. But I'm going to miss, I'm not going to be far away. I'm, I'm at your disposal if you need help or, or somebody to serve here or there. And, uh, I'm not going away. I'm going to stay active and, uh, um, it is going to be nice to have a little break though to concentrate on the fishing and the business and, you know, I've got, uh, four more years till I, till I retire. So we'll, we'll see what happens then. But, uh, going to miss each and every, every one of y'all and I thank y'all.
All right, let's get up and take a picture with it.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll move with adjourn.
I'll second.
We adjourn.
We adjourn.